All right, good evening everyone, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order at this time please. And Ms. Darnley, would you please listen to the prayer.
I bear heaven's honor, we thank you Lord for this day. We thank you Lord for the rain that you're going to bring to us. We ask for that you will watch over this meeting, Lord give us uh the guidance and the direction that we need to take for the best interest in this wonderful town, in your precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the minutes of the July twenty in two thousand fifteen meeting, everybody got a chance to review?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty fifteen.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone here that's not on the agenda this evening? You're on the agenda sir?
Pardon?
Are you Burl?
Yes.
Okay, you're on the agenda sir, thank you. Just making sure so I didn't leave you out there.
No, I took it.
All right, thank you sir. All right, discuss and consider a complaint, concern from Burl Pearl concerning the tank water price and street conditions. You're up.
I'm Pearl.
Hey, why don't you get nervous enough again, just let it go.
I'm nervous.
There you go.
Well, uh, few years ago, I fed this park, you know, water wagons were buying water at five dollars a gallon, which was more than reasonable. And then when that drought hit and everything, it closed the park down, they moved to the, out through the airport. Okay, it became six dollars then. And I was under the impression, I mean, I didn't get word that it was six dollars a gallon to sell water anymore until uh late last September, so I didn't buy any water last year. My last thing, I called the city, talked to some nice lady, she told me that they don't sell water again. So, okay. So, I didn't ask the price, should've, but I didn't. And uh, I went out there and got a tank of water, and I got the bill, and my bill was fifteen dollars. Wow, that's pretty high. That's uh, I mean, tap water, faucet water, or whatever, the house is ten dollars and twenty-nine cents. And uh, hauling my own water is fifteen bucks. I think that's a little out of line. And I understand that you don't need more money, I got the problem with that. But fifteen dollars, I mean, for an individual like me, you know, it's just trying to give people a nice yard and a nice place. And that's the only thing I'm using it for. And all of a sudden I have to pay fifteen dollars a thousand, I'm not gonna pay that. Here it's up.
Okay.
Now, if there's a reason that says on my bill, I couldn't find the bill, it says uh, water, thousand gallons, that prints as extra income and stewards. I do not understand that, I wish somebody would explain to me, because that gal down there at the city, uh, at the city hall, the other day when I called, couldn't explain that, she said that's just the way it is. Either pay it, or leave it alone. Yeah, okay, so I asked for a reason, I'm here.
It's, it's just a, it's an internal term they use for accounting.
Pardon?
It's an internal term they use for accounting, it's just other income, we don't, it's not water income, because it's other income, because we sell it out there at the airport, so it's just an internal accounting term that it's other income related to water in sewer. So, that's all it's really near.
Sewer?
Well, we, we can classify.
That's a fair thing, I can accept that.
Let's just have a classify of that particular line.
Okay.
As far as the cost would have happened, was the well had depleted?
Pardon?
When we had changed the pricing and moved it to the airport, it was when the well had been depleted at the park. So, we, we used the well at the park?
Yeah, I understand that.
When we moved it to the airport?
You know, that's water, always lined up like crazy, which is that, that place, I can see that it's a recreation area, and we were lined up down there like, lined up like corkwood. So, you know, we need to, I, I don't blame you for, well, even for the drought, you know, dried up or whatever. I can understand that. But then when you moved to the airport, it was six dollars. Which was really, I thought, a little cheap, but it's more than fair. And then I go out there and get a load of water, I didn't buy any water last year. And because of that, our place suffered, but I uh, went out there and got my first tank, uh, well, it was last month, July or whatever, that's when my bill showed up. And it was fifteen bucks, and I'd like to add a hundred. I'm not paying fifteen dollars for hauling my own water.
Right.
To do it.
Right. But came to a point.
That's the way it is, that's the way it is.
What we did, we had matched the others in the area that were selling well water. We matched the others in the area selling well water at fifteen per thousand, and we're selling treated water at the airport at fifteen thousand.
I don't need treated water.
Well, that's all we had, that's all we had, is out there for.
I mean, I have a, I've done some investigation too, you know, you know, well work?
Yes.
You know, like, you know, I'm a rancher.
Okay.
And I had uh, I had some good director friends that do have wells. And I've been, uh, I called three of them, and there's some of them, they just sell meat water, of course. And that's the guy I remind, I remind you that these are friends of mine.
Right.
So, I've known them for years. Okay, I'm buying water from them right now, I'm gonna buy water from them at less than five dollars a gallon, I mean, a thousand.
Correct.
So, I don't know who you checked with, but it doesn't make any difference to me. I mean, you know, I'm done, and I'd like to, whoever accepts money, I'll pay the fifteen dollars right now. You know, for my water that I got out there, owe the bill.
Well, I just, I mean, just so you understand, the issue is, is it's treated water, and we can't sell it like raw water, because we, we do have more money in it, so if we started selling it for the same price as raw water, then people could certainly benefit, our entire treatment process, go load up treated water and use that for cheaper than they can get it from the.
There's still an honor system out there, I mean, that's all I did was fill out tickets, son. And then, you know, when we're over at the park, and I, I, you know, I didn't spend a lot at the, at the airport. I mean, that was a non-issue, I was the only one out there, and it doesn't look like anybody else has been out there much. But, you know, when I was over here in the park, these eighteen were rolling with tankers. And we'd have to wait for them to fill thirty, forty thousand gallons at a time, and we've only got, we have only thirty gallons, uh, a thousand gallon tanks. We had to wait for air. And, you know, I don't think that's fair, you know, whatever, but it doesn't make any difference. Who do I give the money to? Anybody.
What point, what point am I getting?
You go over there, you beat her.
That's what I need it.
I don't want to need it. I spent my fifteen dollars on my last paycheck. I don't even need it, you just put it, the last one, put it on my account.
Give free to.
Water's over, right?
Sir?
Water's over?
Water's over for now, if you wanna escape, we're gonna let you escape if you want.
No, no, I want to, I wanna talk about the street.
Okay, got you, I apologize, my fault.
Which probably doesn't really shock you, because I'm sure that however many people live in Bounder Detective has got the same problem, and it's not up here like a stupid man like me.
You're not stupid.
On Fourth Street, I live at four hundred Sharp, at the corner of Sharp and Fourth. And I've had a problem out there with water, does it, uh, right, right on Fourth Street, right at my driveway, my mailbox, everything. I got no drainage whatsoever, and when it rains, thank goodness it's raining, and we had a building with some water, well, it can rain happy, and it fills half the street, and then I've got that water standing up there in that street, blocking my driveway, my mailbox, everything, you know, until it dries up, and that takes forever, and then all of a sudden I'm infested with mosquitoes and all that sort of thing. Two years ago, I called the city hall, and we'll turn in a work order, called again, we'll turn in a work order. Well, this man is in charge, they finally referred me to him, gave me his cell phone number, his name's Scott, I'm sure, I'll get all of it. And uh, when I got ahold of him, he showed up out there fifteen minutes. He looked at it and he said, yeah, Mr. Pearl, you have a buddy to call here. He said, I'll get it fixed as soon as I can, okay? I'll take that, I'll take that. I'm pretty easygoing, but, you know, this was like in February. Okay, now what's it, August, first of August? I called him again uh, last week or the week before, and uh, he said, well, he said, I haven't forgotten about you. He said, I remember where you place is, I remember what your father was. But he said, uh, they've pulled all my crew off of taking care of the streets to work on the new sewer plant, and he said, there's not anything I can do about it, I can follow order. So, he said, I can tell you when I'm gonna get there.
Well, the daily.
Now, sewer has a problem.
Yes, sir, we've been blessed with a lot of water this year, so our street department was covered up doing a lot of mowing, weeding, and taking care of properties around the city, they're taking care of the streets, and then we uh, authorized them to move forward on a new lagoon at the sewer plant, and that's where all the crews are, because we have a deadline, October thirty first. So, at the end of October, we have to have that completed in order to meet our grant. So, that's where the crews are right now. They're coming into town a couple, three days a week, but they're staying out there trying to get that finished. As soon as that gets finished, then they're gonna be back in the city doing their normal routine. So, that was something Scott didn't allude to, but.
Which brings up another issue.
Okay.
What is wrong with the streets in Bounder Detective? You, you know, I know, everybody knows, and the next thing I wanna hear is, we don't have any money.
No, we're not gonna tell you we don't have any money, we have a new plan, we have a new process, and we're working on the budget in order to try to get new equipment in order to fix that, but it doesn't happen overnight. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let you guess, I'm gonna give you a guess, just for oil and rock to redo our streets, we're not gonna do hot top, because hot top is extremely expensive, I'm gonna let you guess at how much it is a month.
I don't know.
It's thirty-five thousand dollars a month. For oil and rock, that's not base, that's not diesel, that's not labor. So, we're trying to do it ourselves, we're trying to get the equipment to do that. So, as we do the budget, this is only the second year that Brian's gonna be here, he's in his second year, we've redone the budget, we're looking at new equipment, we're trying to get other things in place to get our people on that. But it doesn't happen overnight, we have a lot on our plate, we're trying to turn that around.
Last year.
Well, I understand that, but I've only been here four and a half, or not even four and a half, he's only been here a year. So, we are making the right path, we're going right direction, it just takes time to turn the train. So, we're gonna get there. It's on the plan, it's on the agenda, we're gonna do it.
Okay, well, let's talk specifically about Fourth Street.
Okay.
Might be part of October.
Okay.
When can I get that fixed? After October what, thirty?
Yeah, I don't know that, Scott told you he'd get to it, then I'm gonna, that's gonna have to be a Scott thing. If we need to talk to Scott about it, then we can. But when we get the funding.
You know, after two and a half years, sir.
Sir?
After two and a half years.
I've been there over sixteen and fifteen, I didn't.
And there weren't even a work order turned in for the first two years.
Okay. Mr. Pearl, can I contact you this week?
Pardon?
Can I contact you this week? I'll visit with Scotty.
Oh, absolutely, you can contact me.
What is the, I don't wanna get, have you give your number out?
Yeah, I live at four hundred Sharp, I live in Bounder, and my phone number is.
We have your phone number, Paul?
No. I don't think so.
Yes, Scotty knows how to get ahold of you, correct?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, I know.
I'll visit with Scotty in the morning. What, you're probably looking at, you got a pot, you probably have some pavement that's carved out by your, by your driveway, I'm assuming, or in front of your yard.
Well, it's the whole street floods, and it doesn't drain.
I understand.
Yeah, I have a, I have a problem in front of my driveway too, where that water is coming in there for years, it's eroded the, you know, the pavement in front of my driveway, which.
That's what I was referring to.
It dips down kinda like a lipstool.
I will visit with Scotty in the morning. I'll have him contact you. I'm not gonna promise you can be up here this week, but when we can get the equipment out of the sewer farm and back into town, I'll have him come talk to you and, and help you out.
No, I understand all that, I really do, and I really appreciate it. But, you know, I mean, that's the reason I'm here.
Yes, sir.
And I've, bless my opinion, if somebody luck it door, let me in jail, excuse me.
It's not, it's not locked.
I'm gonna go eat supper.
It's not locked.
It's unlocked?
It's not, it's not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, you go back there, Mr. Pearl.
Okay. This door's unlocked.
Yeah, that door right there is behind you unlocked, if you wanna take the shortcut. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, sir, thank you.
Hopefully you won't ever see me again.
Well, we better if we're gonna come see you, right? Hopefully we'll see you then.
Well, somebody's gonna come see me, I'll be back.
All right, discuss and consider the reappointment of Joy McDaniel to the park board. All right, so you. Second?
My second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, consider approval of building permits. You have quite a few in your packets. Trust amigos, is that it, Ron?
Yes. Pretty much storage, carport?
Yes.
So, shed, recycled wood, do what?
Something hot next to their house.
Okay.
Steven, um.
Sure.
He's supposed to do a carport in his backyard. Who's this?
yourselves or these kids?
I make a motion to approve the opening for him, I said present.
Second?
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, discuss and consider the request of Senator Van Zant to grant permission to have Veterans Day parade on November seventh, two thousand fifteen. You should have her request even in your packet. Any questions concerning the Veterans Department?
What is November seventh?
Saturday.
Saturday.
Is that actually Veterans Day?
Veterans Day, it'd be eleven.
So, he's just moving it just Saturday.
Any issues, ma'am?
There were people complaining about the parade blocking everything up on like Tuesday or whatever, they were like, I don't know if that's why she changed. Remember, she told me those, that's about, not doing it on Saturday.
Well, for Veterans Day, she was trying to get the school more involved as far as the kids and, and the land and stuff, so it'll be all cool on Saturday.
I make a motion to approve the request of Senator Van Zant to have a state parade on the November seventh.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'll just. All right, if Officer Travis Baird and Officer Ernest Juarez please come up to the floor. I'm gonna read these individually, is that okay, Joe?
Sure.
All right, these are commendations, and this letter of commendation is presented to Officer Travis Baird for exemplary performance of drug interdiction duties. Officer Baird has brought great credit upon himself and the Bounder Police Department. And also a commendation, this letter of commendation is presented to Officer Ernest Juarez for exemplary performance of drug interdiction duties. Officer Juarez has brought great credit upon himself and the Bounder Police Department. These two gentlemen have done some extra, I don't wanna say curricular, but y'all gone after it, you got the passion for it, you're doing it, and we want to award you for that, commend you for that, is that acceptable, gentlemen?
Yes, sir, I can.
Get you here, get you to. Keep your hand up.
And you got a nice little frame for it too.
Is that okay?
Let's do individually one-on-one, so.
All right.
You wanna go, let's go to the paper. Yeah. Here. Oh, Sam's just shaking your hand. This is here. All right, one, two, three. Okay?
That was rude.
Ready, one, two, three.
All right.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Y'all are awesome.
Yeah, keep that your pen, sorry about that. We did get to hear about some of that stuff sometimes, we don't get to say thank you, thank you, we don't get to see y'all as much as we probably like to. But here's the best part, if we're not hearing any negatives, that means you're doing awesome. Do what?
We, we do it.
I know you do.
It's a, it's a pleasure getting to get some of this off the streets and, and to make people happy, we do our jobs.
No, we, we appreciate you doing your job, we just want you to say we noticed it, and we're awesome with it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, gentlemen, thank you all. All right, moving forward, here the police activity monthly report from two parts of the.
Evening.
Evening, sir.
The weather's warmed up, and we've been pretty busy, we've got twenty rats, forty-four incidents of reports, six accidents, two D W I's.
Thank you all very much, how good evening.
And uh, we requested thirteen warrants this month, we've been better this summer, more people get in trouble. Two juvenile, family violence is down, surprisingly, everything else. Uh, one of the deals I got the commendation for is one of our big dope dealers that lives right outside of town was arrested by these two together with a sizable amount of meth and dope, and she excels for the Arden Brotherhood. So, that may, who knows, it may lead to more, something higher, it won't be us, it'll be DPS or somebody, if it goes that direction, we're hoping it does.
Okay.
We had no deaths, that's a good thing. Everything else just about normal, let's just take it here. Uh, we had ninety-two citations this month, or July, so that's pretty odd.
Um, I have a question, and this is kind of a follow-up from our meeting, uh, last week. You had mentioned, uh, we're getting a lot of convictions, but we're not getting a stipule of punishment. Can you?
Our operation we did last, uh, several months, last six months or so, London ended with five arrests. They haven't all pled out, but three out of the five, I think maybe four, at least three are, they've all done probation for selling meth and dope. And we suspect they're all gonna get it. So, therefore, they're still on the street, they're still stealing, they're still slinging dope, they're still doing the same things I used to do, but they're on probation now. All we can do is hope that they get another trouble and get their probation hang. But as far as common crime, you know, probation usually doesn't work for these kind of people, they just, they keep doing what they do. And the dope is always gonna be tied in with burglaries and the thieves, the theft, the theft, all that kind of stuff, because they need the money for the drugs, and they have to have the drugs because they're addicts. Even though we did what we could, the, uh, the probation.
Somebody brought something, you know, someone that got tickets here actually. Uh, they asked why we didn't have deferred adjudication, because a lot of cities, what they'll do is, they'll allow you, pay your hundred and forty dollar speeding ticket or whatever, take defensive driving, or you can pay two hundred and twenty dollars today, or two hundred and fifty dollars today, if you have a deferred adjudication. I'm not sure if that would result in more income for the city, but it's an option we can look at, because there are a lot of people that would just rather pay the two hundred and twenty or two hundred and forty dollars and walk away from it. And I'm talking about for minor speeding offenses.
Yeah, yeah, statute.
You judge Little, they have to, they have, Judge Little.
But they, but they do that in several cities around here, where they just have deferred adjudication. You'll, you'll, you'll pay out extra, but, but it's not on your record, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah, we just never have that deferred adjudication, because it's charged for some and charged for another, I mean, unless you're gonna do it for every one or one more, and if you found that doesn't pay off. I mean, it might be a little more, more income, but uh, uh, and they expect it, uh, sometimes in larger places, we just never have done it.
Okay. There's some cities around here that do it, and I just didn't know.
There's a number, a number of cities do it. I can, I can tell you that statute, if you're, if you're so miles, so much over the speed limit, I think you're twenty over, deferred adjudication's not gonna be.
Right, as it should be.
Yeah. Um, I can visit, Judge Little's supposed to come into my office tomorrow morning, uh, and we can have a conversation about any issues or objections, and then uh, see if there's some room to work that out to where we, because it is a viable option, I think it is a good option, and yes, we can make a little bit more money.
Well, and it just, there's got to be people that have done it in a way that makes sense, and that is, you know, maybe can, I don't know.
Let's take the beans for missing.
If I'm jumping ahead a couple steps, something needs to go on the agenda. Oh, it's Sharon does not want to be the radio's control authority anymore, so we need to, you guys have to do a vote if you wanna put Sam into that position. Because Sharon wants out, she doesn't do that anymore, she, she actually asked me a while back, I forgot about it. She came back to work today, first thing she told me, she would like that.
Well, I mean, if he's taking keeping and everything else, that's probably his problem.
Yeah, so, Sam, I guess, it's up to y'all, but Sam's probably the best choice to do it now.
Any questions?
In your soul?
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
We can make money off of, by not having traffic citations. I just don't know why we don't, I mean, that was the question posed to me, is why don't y'all offer deferred adjudication? Because, you know, they would, they would rather pay the extra.
About to deal with it, just pay it.
Yeah. And we're talking about monotrac, it's, I wouldn't offer across the board to all.
Yeah.
All missed here.
There's someone we don't, you know.
Right.
All right.
Because somebody was really perturbed that that wasn't offered, so, that's why I'm.
Well, yeah, we've had a lot of traffic, well.
We should have been looking at it before, they know that. I just made an assumption that it was available, you know, it was available anywhere else. Looking at it tomorrow. Cool, all right, discuss and consider saying the dates for public hearing on the two thousand fifteen tax rate and propose two thousand sixteen budget. Robin Burgess contacted me last Monday, and it's that time of the year again where we need to put ads in the paper and get notices out. I had, uh, what I'm thinking is have our first budget and tax rate hearing on August seventeenth. I think we'll have one at five and the other one at five fifteen, and then we'll start counseling at five thirty. You do not have to be present for either hearing, it's just a matter of. You do not have to be present for, uh, either hearing, it's just a matter of, it's a, lots of public time to speak, so we don't have to have a long starter. And then the other one on September the eighth, note, but that's a Tuesday. And so we will move our counseling from Monday, September the seventh, which is Labor Day, to Tuesday, September the eighth. Uh, we are not, statute does not allow us to have a public hearing on a holiday. I just took the liberty of moving the whole thing, I hope everyone's okay with that. You will also see in the paper, uh, we have a standardized ad, every city has to put in there. Uh, it's going to ask for a number of things, one of which is our proposed. One of the things you're gonna see in the, in the papers on proposed rate, um, it'll be exactly identical to the rollback rate. Here's a reason for that, I am not actually making that as a proposal. Uh, but the statute says if I put in a certain number, and we ultimately decide to go above that number, we have to do this whole dance all over again. So what this does is it allows us to comply with the state statute, but we also have the flexibility to adopt any rate we choose. I am not anticipating us going up to the rollback, I just wanna be clear about that, but I wanna give us options as to what we wanna do. And that gave us the most flexibility to sort about that. So, August the seventeenth and September the eighth, starting at five and then five fifteen. The motion is.
I make the motion that we set August the seventeenth and Tuesday, September the eighth for a public hearing for the two thousand fifteen tax rate imposed.
Second.
My second.
All the favor, say aye.
Aye.
I guess y'all gonna name the one, and they have a pretty, you know, I guess that's one of them, huh?
I didn't say aye.
Whoever doesn't say aye is the day, right?
Someone will say nay, they're gonna say.
Please say better, right? Alright, discuss and take action on interlocal agreement with the city of Bronx for disposal of.
This is the second city, the center of the city?
Yes.
Are we gonna, are we gonna form a corporation?
That's not my intent.
They don't have jail shelters in Mount Lebron?
No. Uh, the, well, the backstory on this is that San Angelo was, um, taking dogs in, uh, for an animal fee. And as of, you know, Octo- August the first, or.
They wouldn't know yet.
Well, no, they, they're not taking any dogs, that's autonomous and county.
Oh, yeah, I thought they were.
So, they obviously left Miles, uh, for the need. Miles ends up talking to Bron, who ends up calling me on Friday afternoon and saying, can we get the same deal with Miles? I've always, I've asked the question, how many dogs are we talking about? We're probably talking about five per year from each community. And, uh, there would need to be some protocols put in place, um, in, in this, the agreement, it discusses some of those things. Uh, we're not gonna turn out to be just a regional animal shelter, this is not my intent.
Well, as long as we're prosperous, like, I mean, I just feel bad for saying, he's gonna have to be doing their.
Yeah.
Our prices are higher.
Yeah. As this thing go, grows, we can. I'm trying, I'm kinda taking a wait-and-see approach on price. They haven't asked you for a price, it just has to do. Well, they, they asked me for a price, I got a price from Sam, and then that was the, the, the number I gave Miles, which is the same amount I've given Bron. But if it turns into something more than that, we can certainly adjust the prices accordingly. I'm not expecting this to be a high-volume thing, I just think right many counties and cities who they have a need, they've reached out, but, but I don't think this is, and I could be completely wrong, I just don't think this would be a high-volume.
The motion we approved the interlocal agreement with the city of Bronx for disposal of animals.
Second.
Second.
All the favor say aye.
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 There is one point in here that's not mentioned, and that's vicious animals, it's not specifically stated. I don't know if it matters, but.
Is there a definition of vicious animal?
We have one for the city, I don't, I can give it to you verbatim.
Okay, well, we have a definition of what a vicious animal is, how do we treat vicious animals within the city?
But it's up to the judge, usually the judge orders the destruction of.
Yeah, I think we, it's covered under a court order, if, if.
But I don't, they're gonna have to go on the case when it comes to use same dog.
Yeah. Oh, it's not in there, you wanna make sure it's in there, so we have cover our test party.
Right, that's legal.
They have drew the, the agreement, uh, are we covering under vicious animals?
So it's a part of that, you know, vulnerability of people, communities, localities, within the candidates, damage, injury, and loss of life.
We've got decent waiver laws on both of them. Before any damage. Maybe just to be able to, they're leaving.
If you got a court order from Judge Little or, or some pertinent court, you destroy the animal, correct, Mark?
Correct.
So if they're municipal court, or they're court of law, or they're county.
Hunter's comment would be good, I mean.
Yeah. Are you okay with that, or do you wanna amend the motion?
Oh, they're being damaged from this animal coming out, being that specific.
Do you wanna amend the motion to include vicious animals?
I make the motion to amend the motion, uh, amend the interlocal agreement. What? I make the motion to amend the motion. To include vicious animals, what's that? Law school or order.
Is it a vendable?
First time I get on TV, you make me look stupid. I'm kidding. Uh, I make the motion to amend that, uh, interlocal agreement to include vicious animals. And any, any impact there are.
Second. Oh, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank, thank, thank. Vendable, deable, and. Vendable, deable, and.
And I don't know.
There's a bunch of high school students on the. Yeah. They, they, they do. Alright, discuss and take action on the proposed Lions Club grant staff part.
Uh, to mend that, we're gonna afford grant staff, it's a proposed, uh, uh, Lions Club, uh, project. For the level there, uh, between myself and Eckers concerned, and, uh, Eckers found, I had people in there to, to start working, do some work on that wall, and proposal is that the, uh, Lions Club will, uh, make this into a park by, uh, doing some tables, walls, add in the center of it, or four, five tables, and, uh, opening up, uh, the front, so it will be, uh, so you can always back through, if, uh, that's just kind of the proposal, and have iron work there in front, and, uh, and, uh, then, uh, turn it over to the, uh, uh, city, and, uh, and working out why we would need to be lucked out, and, uh, Lions Club has approved it, uh, as a, we're actually doing it as a nineteen seventeen, it'll be a hundred years old, and it'll be a something in the project, as Lions Club is doing, and this is the one, uh, under Lions Clubs, uh, uh, want to do, and, and go to be the boundary, uh, noon club, and, uh, and the record, uh, and, uh, so, uh, we're proposing that, uh, that be done, if the city is willing to accept it, and, uh, it'd be an extension, or however you wanna do it, it's more a kind of a plaza, or it'll be a partway, or whatever ever, uh, you want to do, but, uh, that's just something we've always had in mind, I'm gonna donate the lot, and the Lions Club, uh, I have some money, they're gonna put into it, if you have to have some more money, we'll have to raise your, ask some more projects, but it wouldn't there'd be no liability, uh, from the city's standpoint, except for what the equipment or the furniture might use, but, uh, they were also, we proposed to take all the gravel out and put them back ways that the dog might, or whatever, to make it more smooth, and the permanent type tables, so that there'd be less maintenance, not much maintenance to it at all, and, uh, uh, I like these tables that they proposed, uh, cost about a thousand dollars, tie them down and put them in, but, uh, they're permanent type tables that'd be attached to, uh, the underground in such a way that they'll be there permanently. So, uh, uh, Lions Club voted, uh, today noon to present this to the city, that's been talked about between both parties a little bit soon, and, uh, uh, something they want to do, wanted to do, and that can be an asset to the city for people riding through, and, um, sent back through the Pioneer Plaza, and being informed about that down there.
So what's the city made of this, proof of?
Well, what role does the city wanna play in this venture? I think we probably have some equipment that we could lend to the project. Clearly, it, the maintenance of it, the ongoing maintenance
Yeah.
can be, you know,
Right.
gone into Pioneer Plaza. You know, there's some things that, there's some things that we can commit to the project that don't have to deal with money directly, is that?
Yeah, 'cause we don't want anything to be, uh, attributable to the fact that, uh, the city's doing, doing this, that, uh, you know, but, uh, we propose to do, everything that's done, and, um, you know, there can be things done in, in the future, but that will be in the future, but, uh, uh, it would have to be eventually made over to the, to the city, and, uh, that will be in the proposal also. But along with that would be the, what there would be done to make it into all the things would be, uh, for that partway.
We insist in the improvements, uh, if you wanna, uh, uh, at this point, I don't know if money's gonna be requested, uh, but I think the, the little bigger picture is that we're gonna be main, we will, we will maintain it
Right.
in perpetuity, which is not, I mean, we're doing Pioneer Plaza already, so it's not gonna be that impactful.
It's kind of favored that wall, and that sign is, is David's, uh, wall, but, uh, he's committed, uh, a certain amount of money, if that wall fixed up, and, uh, if it doesn't hold that, well, then that's, we'll be fine, but, uh, to take off the, the flabs and kind of put in, back in some of the rock, and, yeah, and sort of looks more like the original. You know, because that part of it is to make it look like it's original, 'cause we really go, it's the top part of the front, center post, and all the back part, yeah, so that you can see completely through, and, uh, of course, it might be too hot to eat lunch out there today, but, uh, some other times where, uh, people could have lunch out there because of the Pioneer Plaza, I know you, for many different things, uh, 'cause I'm always going in my back door, and sometimes I get scared because, and people are coming around, and I don't know, but, uh, anyway, that, uh, I'm gonna be, uh, not, you know, in a spot anyway.
So we need a motion to, uh, they're gonna dig the land, so accept the, accept holding in, participate in the construction and maintenance. Is that, is that the motion that we need?
Yeah, there and there, and, uh, to accept the proposal of the, uh, Lions Club to, uh, uh, dig the lot and, uh, and, uh, make some, uh, uh, renovations to the lot, you know, that would be acceptable for park purposes, or, I guess is what you're saying.
And I guess what, what we do in the motions is leave that up to you.
Yeah.
With your purview, so if it goes too far, you can kind of say, no, maybe we can't do that, we can do this.
Yeah, give me some flexibility.
Give you some, yeah. I don't know if I can make that motion, 'cause I'm the Lions Club.
All of y'all.
I make the motion that we approve, um, uh, the proposed Lions Club, uh, park project, to accept the deed of holding to participate, uh, in the, uh, improvements, uh, according within the dag line set by the city manager, and then to provide maintenance and upkeep on the park moving forward.